Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority Meeting of Tuesday, March 7, 2023. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have a video to play of Madison Mungia from our Police Department singing the National Anthem. Then please remain standing as we say together the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Now, the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Now, it's time for our moment of solemn expression. Tonight, we're pleased to have lead us Pastor Jordan Hanson from Mesa Church. Pastor Hanson, you have the floor.
It's an honor to be here. Please bow your heads. Father, thank you for the opportunity to rule and to regulate. We understand that it is complicated. It's not always easy to have conversations with people who may have different opinions. But, Lord, I pray that tonight would be a night where people feel a sense of honor and dignity even when they disagree. And, Lord, I pray that you would give us wisdom and discernment because the law, the regulations, the things, the policies that we're enacting impact people's lives. So I pray that you would help us see how they impact people's lives. Help us to do the right thing in a way that honors the dignity of those that make up this great city of Costa Mesa. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. So today, we have Stacy Turan, who's going to be our Madam Clerk. She's our Deputy City Clerk, and she's going to be standing in for Brenda Green. So when I say Madam Clerk, I refer into Stacy. Welcome, and I know we'll have a lot of fun. You'll do a good job tonight. So, Madam Clerk, will you please do the roll call?
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Here.
Councilmember Harper?
Here.
Mayor Protam Harland?
Here.
Mayor Stevens?
Here.
And let the record reflect that Councilmember Marr is absent.
All right. City Attorney, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No action was taken in closed session, but the council did give direction on the items in the agenda.
All right. Thank you very much. So this evening, we have one presentation, and it's the proclamation for 2023 Women's History Month. March is Women's History Month. Women's History Month allows us to honor the women who have contributed to American history. Tonight, we are presenting a proclamation to the Costa Mesa Women's Club. The Costa Mesa Women's Club was formed 113 years ago as a Friday morning club. The club's objectives are to provide educational advantages for their community and transform common concerns of public interest into projects and programs of action. The club also stresses the importance of family unity and making realistic contributions toward world peace. One of the Women's Club members officially named our city Costa Mesa. I did not know that till I just read that. Joining us tonight are a number of women from our Women's Club, and especially their President Nancy Rowbottom. And so, President Rowbottom, we're going to give you the floor in a second to say a few words. I'm going to read excerpts from the proclamation, and we're all going to get together as a group and have a nice photo opportunity with the proclamation. So Nancy, if you could go to the podium, and here's from the proclamation. "American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. American women were essential in establishing early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation." The Women's History Month theme for 2023 is "Celebrating Women Who Tell Our Stories", designated by the National Women's History Alliance. This theme honors the women who have long been instrumental in passing on our heritage in the world and print, sorry, in word and print, to communicate the lessons of those who came before us. Women's stories expand our understanding and strengthen our connections. I call upon all Costa Mesa residents to pay tribute to the women who continue to tell our stories and recognize their dedication and shared desire to give a voice to the voiceless." Okay. President Rowbottom, you have the floor.
Thank you for inviting us to this evening and presenting the proclamation. I just want to give a little highlight here of the club. In 1910, when it was first formed, it was as known as the Friday Afternoon Club. It was established in a meeting at the home of Miss Alice Plummer. And if you didn't know her, this Costa Mesa city used to be known as Harper, but everybody got confused with Harpersville, which is up the road here near Garden Grove. So the name was changed to Costa Mesa. And under the sponsorship of Dr. B.M. Armstrong, the membership flourished, and in 1922, the group was formally accepted in the California Federation of Women's Clubs. Property for the clubhouse was donated by Mrs. Carl Spencer. The early building was located on Newport Boulevard between 17th and 18th Street. It was soon too small for the membership and was sold in 1948. The clubhouse we now use for the membership was sold in 1948. The clubhouse we now use was built and the club moved into it in 1950. Money to finish the kitchen was built and the club moved in. I'm sorry, I read that line twice. Money to finish the kitchen was raised by a group of members who donated $50 each, thus becoming life members. In 1961, the club members celebrated the burning of the mortgage. In 1962, the club name was officially changed to the Costa Mesa Women's Club. The club has received numerous awards through the years and had the honor of supplying two district presidents, a Mrs. A.P. Nelson and a Mrs. Ruben Day. In early 1993, the members voted to withdraw from the federation and devote our energies and resources to continuing sociability and involvement in the community affairs. In 2010, our club celebrated our 100 years. That was the time when we received the proclamation also from the city. We now consist of a group of interesting and diverse ladies who thoroughly enjoy our membership in the club and hopefully will continue to do so. And we are not just members or part of the community in Costa Mesa. We are in Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley, Irvine, Newport Beach. We're all around in the local area here. Some of the functions that we sponsor this year I'd like to share with you is the Newport Mesa Halfway House by Harold and Justin Richards Foundation's Charlie's House, which is known as First Step House of Orange County, Costa Mesa Goat Hill and Lions Club. They meet in our building. And we also work with the Lions Club for Fish Fries that you see at the park. We work with the Phil and Monica of Orange County, and we have worked with the Stancha Girls Basketball Team, the Golden West Pops Orchestra, Pollyann Gorman, maybe you know her. Their orchestra practices in their building every Wednesday, and it's open to the public. We do work with Carden Hall with their junior high kids, the Stancha Football Team, and Life on the Streets is some of our community that we work with. Thank you.
Thank you, President. That was a beautiful story in keeping with the theme of the year of telling stories. Thank you very much. Now, what we'll do is we'll take a picture, and you're all welcome to be in the photograph. Okay. So now, it's time for public comments. People get three minutes for public comments, but if it's interpreted, it goes from three minutes to five minutes. For public comments, you can talk about anything other than what's on the agenda. You can talk about anything else, and we'll go to the people in the chambers first, then we'll go to folks on Zoom. And you're going to hear a beep at two minutes and then wrap it up because at three minutes, your microphone cuts off. Same thing on Zoom. You can hear the beep at two minutes. We'll cut you off at three minutes. Okay? Ms. Martin, you have the floor.
As the treasurer of the Costa Mesa Women's Club, I'm often at the Citibank branch on Harbor and Peterson Place. I've gotten to know quite a few of the tellers, especially a young man by the name of Jean Paul. He told me that his friends call him JP, so I've been calling him JP. I was there this last Monday, two days yesterday, to deposit some money for the Women's Club. I'd had a very rough weekend, a really downer weekend, and I went to the teller who was open and started my transaction. When JP was done with his transaction, he actually came over to where I was and said, "Hi, Flo." That made my day. A smile and a hello can make the difference in a person's life. It really does. I walk on Harbor Boulevard a lot. I've been doing that for decades. Now, when I walk, I make conversation and contact with everyone I see because I know it makes a difference. On my walk there today, I met Ben Chapman for lunch at Kenwood's. On my way home, I passed a bus shelter that was filthy. Our city needs to be responsible and take charge of cleaning up our bus shelters. This particular bus shelter had graffiti on both sides of a shield or wall. The bench itself was scratched to the point where there was paint missing everywhere. The trash receptacle also had paint missing everywhere. But the thing that concerned me the most, counsel, is that there was human feces on the ground next to the trash receptacle. That is dangerous. The city needs to clean up its act when it comes to maintaining bus shelters. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Chris McAvoy, Costa Mesa. The more I dig into the process this council majority undertook with regards to the residential permit parking program, the more I see how deceitful and disingenuous this council majority is. I hope that this behavior of being deceitful and disingenuous was limited to the majority handling of Measure K. I was wrong. Being deceitful and disingenuous is definitely a character trait of this council majority. The way the RF, the way the residential park, permit parking program has been implemented reminds me of how the previous developer majority rolled out the Fairview Park Committee. This charade of a committee was assembled to come to one and only one conclusion. Fairview Park was to become sports fields. Fortunately, residents became wise to the plan, and they stopped it. The residential permit parking program was always to reach one and only one conclusion, the one that we have today. I believe it started by misleading the public about a high volume of resident concerns. I shared a concern. My concern was, when was permit enforcement going to start? Was my concern counted and the context of my concern disregarded? I have a FOIA request, and I'll answer that shortly. Next, we are presented a faulty study of how underutilized parking is on permitted streets. If we want a true study, the city should look at the studies that they did that show that there was an actual need for permit parking. The reason that the study the city provides is faulty is that not all the residents that live near the permitted streets were aware that permit enforcement has stopped. If they were aware that permit enforcement has stopped, the study would have shown results that we saw previously that gave us permitted parking. Your political careers can end in one of two ways, with honor and dignity, and you undo the damage that you've done to the city, Measure K, and the parking program. Or two, you can become pariahs of this community and destroy your family's names. Residents, when a council member references the faulty study, they're being disingenuous and deceitful. Residents, when council members can't give you a straightforward answer about people buying permits that don't live on your street, they're being deceitful and disingenuous. Residents, when council members can't give you the number of permits being sold, they're being deceitful and disingenuous. Residents, when council members can't differentiate between the benefit of keeping permits and not having permits, they're being deceitful and disingenuous.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you need my counsel?
Yeah. Hold on one second. Go ahead.
Good evening, counsel. Kim Hendricks here to talk to you about Fairview Nature Park, and I want to invite everybody out to the restoration that is this Saturday. We have it every month in collaboration with the city of Costa Mesa. It's called Second Saturday of the Month Restoration from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and we will be continuing our combined efforts to remove non-natives from the Vernal Pool Watershed 5, 6, and 7. We could use as many hands as possible, so whoever wants to come on out will have the tools and gloves to provide for you. Okay, I'm trying to. And did you know that Fairview Park is located on a mesa top that supports one of the last coastal vernal pool complexes in California? The value of the habitat in the park cannot be overstated. I wanted to bring this up also because I've listened to a few city council meetings, and there may be some confusion with a council member and one resident regarding flying airplanes in Fairview Park. And I want to remind them that on September 28, 2021, the city council voted on this after it took a year and a half of city staff, time, energy. The whole committee of Fairview Park Steering was obsessed with it, the comprehensive evaluation that Cynthia DiAgosta had everyone do, seeing Sage Autobond. And so, I'd really like the, I'm going to read the motion, which happened to end the confusion. There's no flying airplanes in Fairview Park. There's no fly field. It's a vernal pool watershed that was illegally graded by the city in the time of terror in Fairview Park. There was no SEQA or EIR done. Those days are over. Okay? The city is definitely moving forward. Okay? The substitute motion is to include in the Fairview Park Master Plan update a broader analysis of flying in Fairview Park. Okay? Also, looking at other sites, Fairview Developmental Center, and only permit gliders going forward. The launch site in the Fairview Park Master Plan is next to the restrooms. You can go out there on Sunday and talk with Charlie. He goes out there and flies his gliders. He knows all about balsick wood and paper and everything. But, I'm sorry, but the group that was allowed to do whatever they wanted for many years is felt very entitled, and they should have because they were doing things they never should have done. Those days are over. Okay? Fairview Park, we just have to get concerts in the park. Move it. Let's not keep saying no to the residents. Let's be positive and show them the value of Fairview Park, and there are many other places.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You have the floor. Five minutes if it's interpreted.
Thank you. Buenas tardes. Good evening. Mi nombre es Juana Trejo. My name is Juana Trejo. Y creo que ya me conocen. And I believe you know me. Pues así como me conocen ustedes a mí. The same way that you know me. Me gustaría que los distritos que ustedes representan. I would like for each of your districts that you represent. La gente también los conociera ustedes. That the people would also know you. Hay muchas gente que no sabe a qué distrito pertenecen. There's a lot of people that do not know what district they are living in. Ni saben quién es su representante. And do not know who they're being represented by. Y creo que ese es uno de los mayores errores. And I believe that's one of the main errors. Que ustedes están representando distritos. That you are representing districts. Donde ni siquiera la gente los conoce. Not even, and the people do not know you. Yo hoy los vengo a invitar. Today, I come to invite you. A que vengan a caminar en sus distritos. To come walk your districts. Y que tengan esos unos a unos con la gente que ustedes representan. And that you make connections with the people that you represent. Porque es muy importante. Because it's very important. Que ustedes escuchen lo que la gente está viviendo. It's important that you come so you can listen to the lives that people, the residents, are living in your district. Y es bien triste. And it's really sad. Que los niños que son el futuro del mañana. That the children that are the future of tomorrow. Piensen que vivir como ahorita es normal. To think that the way that they live today is normal. No podemos decirles que se preparen para votar. We cannot tell them to prepare to vote. Si no estamos viendo resultados, los que lo están haciendo ahora. Especially if they're not seeing the results of those that are leading today. Queremos que haya comunicación con ustedes. We want to have open communication with each of you. Porque yo solo los veo cuando se andan promoviendo. Because I only see you when you are running for candidacy. Y cuando vengo aquí. And when I come here to speak. Así es que por favor les pido que tomen en cuenta esta petición. And I ask of you to take this petition to value. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Oh, you have a presentation? Okay. Okay. That's a good way to start.
Am I good to get started, Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Good evening, counsel. I want to talk about some, an issue here that is weighing on me. It's just the sheer amount of cannabis dispensaries that our city council has approved. I mean, it's outstanding. The council has approved over 30 places to smoke cannabis in Costa Mesa, 23 places to buy cannabis, and I think, and if not more than this. You can see that we have the Wild Goose, we have the Harp Inn, we have Turner's Pub, we have Hennessy's Tavern, we have La Vit. Oh, sorry. These are, these are all bars in Costa Mesa. These are all places where you can buy and consume alcohol in Costa Mesa. These are place, these are liquor stores in Costa Mesa. There's 23 of them that I counted. This is all from Google Maps, by the way. There is six breweries in Costa Mesa. There is a truly countless number of convenience stores, liquor stores, gas stations, restaurants, and supermarkets that sell alcohol in Costa Mesa. And there is conversation right now between the public and council to cap the number of dispensaries I have, which we have currently approved 14. This doesn't make sense to me. We have a problem here, and a problem with doing that is fourfold. One is we're losing the ability to get sales tax. The dream of every city, I learned this by public policy class in college, is to tax residents of other cities, right? So a city would typically raise its taxes on something like rental cars and hotels because you're not taxing your own residents, you're taxing someone else, right? So we're leaving money on the table. If we can't have dispensaries throughout our whole city to serve the residents right now of Huntington Beach, Irvine, and Newport Beach that currently drive to Santa Ana for their dispensary needs, we're leaving money on the table if we don't allow more dispensaries for that reason. Alcohol is way worse for society than cannabis. Way worse for society. Think of the amount of drunk driving we have in Costa Mesa, and I think everyone knows here, I say this as a bartender, too. I understand the industry, and I understand the revenue, but it's way worse for society. Three, monopolization. You have some arbitrary cap that gives the who got in first in the cannabis industry priority over now on everyone else. And because you removed competition means those who want to consume the product, we're going to have to pay higher prices because there's no competition in the market because we're going to put an arbitrary constraint. And last thing is a walkable city. A walkable city is a place where within 15 minutes of your home, you can walk to the supermarket, you can walk to the pharmacy, or you could walk to get cannabis or walk to buy liquor. And walking is an important facet of that, and to put an arbitrary constraint, you're not actually creating a walkable city. So I encourage you not to put an arbitrary constraint on the amount of cannabis dispensaries we have in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Anna Lidia Tutila.
Good evening. My name is Anna Tutila.
El mes pasado estuve acá presente con ustedes para hacer una El mes pasado estuve acá presente con ustedes para hacer una gran petición.
Last month, I was here in front of you for a grand petition.
Mientras Dios me dé vida y salud, yo aquí voy a estar haciendole la misma petición.
While God gives me health, I will remain here with the same petition.
Como líder comunitario, como promotora de salud...
As a community leader and health promoter.
Vengo a solicitarles como un derecho de ciudadana y de residente y de líder.
I come to ask you as a resident, as a citizen, and as a leader.
Que nuestra comunidad necesita a gritos una ordenanza de regulación de renta.
That our community and screens needs rent control.
Por qué razón?
For what reason?
Si ustedes saben, la AB 1482 ya no nos están parando y...
As you know, AB 4282...
Ya no nos ampara. Razón por la cual...
Is not helping for the following reasons.
Las altas de mensualidad de renta han subido espantosamente.
The rate... The rent raises have gone up too much.
Además, ha habido acosos y desalojos.
In addition, there have been... There have been evictions and injustice.
Esa es una de las grandes razones que nosotros pedimos esa regulación de renta. Otra de las razones...
And that's why we're here. For... And another of the reasons.
Es que no están acatando la ley.
They are not applying the law.
Los señores dueños de casas.
The landlords and homeowners.
Ya que le están aumentando más del 10%.
They are raising rents more than 10%.
Más de lo que la ley establece.
More than the rent the law allows.
A eso le agregamos la tasa de impuesto de lo global.
They're adding more than the TPA.
Además, otra de las razones importantes es nuestro ingreso mensual.
In addition, it's our monthly income.
No es justo y equitativo con lo que nos aumentan.
It's not just with how much they raise the rent.
Esas son una de las pequeñas razones además. Nosotros sabemos que ustedes ya han estado abogando por nosotros.
And... And in addition, they know that... She knows that you have been fighting for them.
Pero no es suficiente.
But it is not enough.
Un ejemplo es...
An example is...
Con el dinero, esos millones que dieron para la pandemia, para ocuparlos.
With the millions of dollars that were given during the pandemic.
Para ayudar a las personas que habían sido desalojadas.
To help the people who have been evicted and unhoused.
Pero eso no es permanente.
But that is not permanent.
En cambio, la regulación de renta sí lo será.
But rent control will be. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody at this podium, so you can speak, ma'am.
Hola. Buenas tardes.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Frances.
My name is Frances.
Y soy promotora y líder comunitaria.
And I am a health promoter and community leader.
En esta tarde...
This afternoon.
Quisiera que se pusieran a pensar.
I would like you to take a minute to think.
Que la semana pasada...
That last week.
Tuvimos...
We had.
Temperaturas muy bajas.
Very low temperatures.
Y hay familias...
And there were families.
Que no tienen hogar.
That did not have a house.
Les quiero pedir por favor.
I ask of you, please.
Que puedan apoyar.
That you could support.
Un control de renta.
Rent control.
Y vivienda accesible.
And accessible housing.
Para la comunidad.
For the community.
Por qué tener un techo?
Because to have a roof.
Es un derecho.
Is a right.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. My name's Jen Tanaka. I'll be brief tonight. I just wanted to quickly use this opportunity to revisit one of our Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets resolutions that we wanted to promote to the city this year. The reason I wanted to use this opportunity is because we've had some pretty crazy weather since the last council meeting. We've had tons of rain, even had snow, and, you know, some pretty cold temperatures. And one thing that was... That's really apparent if you are driving around in Costa Mesa or if you're biking or taking the bus or if you are... And it was definitely apparent last summer when we had some pretty significant heat is we do a really bad job of outfitting and maintaining our bus stops with appropriate shelter and benches. Some of our stops are really in appalling shape. Some of them have no... Many of them have no street furniture at all. So there's nowhere to sit, and there's no place to stand under any kind of shade. And the ones that do have good amenities, they're just terribly maintained. Paint is peeling, you know, we have trash that is overflowing. And I know, you know, what's sad is that for some people, this is the first thing they see when they come to Costa Mesa, is the state of our bus stops because that's how they come into the city. And I think it's just a really bad first impression. And my understanding is that our bus shelter advertising contract should be up for renewal, I believe, next year. So given that, you know, we have some time, I wanted the councils to start considering auditing how well that contract is going and the state of our bus stops and to see if we can try to make some improvements there. Briefly, I'd just also like to remind everyone that we still lack a complying housing element. We are still subject to the builder's remedy and if HCD will set enforcement action. And while there are many structural reasons why I think personally that a builder's remedy project might be less likely here than elsewhere, I don't think they're impossible. There were actually two newer projects that were proposed just now in the last couple of weeks in Orange, not too far from here. So no city is immune. And we need to get either deciding to rezone the RENA sites that we need to get compliant first, or we need to get going on comprehensive rezoning as soon as possible because that process will take a long time. And finally, I just wanted... I noted that you guys are having a retreat on Friday. That sounds like fun, but I will not be there because I will be working. I would like to ask maybe the next time you guys do these kinds of retreats that you try to at least make part of it available via Zoom, if not all of it. It's very hard for working people to attend a daytime weekday session that's only held in person. We should have the technology to do that, so it would have been great to have it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Hold on one second. Now.
Are we good?
Good to go.
Hello, council members. I'm Rav Deep, and I'm a Costa Mesa High School senior and a flag enthusiast. And I've been wondering if we are keeping our current city flag as it doesn't really reflect the standards I believe a city of the arts should have. Despite it saying the city of the arts, it is not very artistically inclined and breaks several of the vexilological rules. And we have many talented artists in our city. And hosting a referendum to change the flag and hosting a competition where our citizens could submit new flag designs would be very beneficial. And I just ask you to consider that on a very light note. Thank you.
Thanks. How about on Zoom, acting Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Cynthia McDonald, please.
Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Last night, I got the notice of your strategic planning meeting on Friday. Obviously, this was a meeting that's been in the works for some time. And you've hired a professional facilitator and probably have more on the agenda than what was published. But I have several concerns. First is the lack of transparency. I know you're probably getting sick of me bringing this up, but as an officer of Costa Mesa first, whose primary objective is to require Costa Mesa's leaders to put the residents of Costa Mesa first, it's hard for me to say the city is being transparent and serving its residents when it sends out what I consider to be a late notice of a long planned meeting that is supposed to last most of the day with little or nothing on the agenda, and then the public gets limited access because it isn't allowed to view the meeting on YouTube or Zoom. I hope you're recording it so it can be viewed later. I happen to have that day off, but that is because I'm taking care of my three-year-old grandson. But, you know, maybe the three-year-old and I will turn up at the meeting at some point during the day. That should be fun. Second, in the past, you have not engaged the city's public... The city's advisory committees in the strategic planning. These citizens voluntarily donate their time and efforts towards bettering the city process. And they do so enthusiastically. The advisory committees are underutilized, and the city council should really be using their knowledge. I hope that you will contact each of the committee members or leaders and ask them for their input or their attendance at the strategic planning meeting. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Carroll.
Mr. Carroll, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. We're wrapping... We're approaching the three-year anniversary of the city had to declare a state of emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. And with the state ending the state of emergency on February 28th, and majority of the cities surrounding us have already ended theirs, roughly, you know, some a couple of years ago, some a little more recent. I believe it's time the city council votes to end it. It's been long enough. I think everyone needs... We need to start moving on, moving forward from this, and really look forward to seeing that coming up on the agenda suite. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No further speakers.
Okay, so we'll close public comment then. And we'll go to council member committee reports, comments, and suggestions. First up, from Harpeville, Councilmember Donald Harper. Oh, you just have to... Oh, we're not on discussion mode. I'm sorry, Don. Hold on one second. There you go. Now you could just turn your own thing on. All right, thank you. Thank you. Welcome to Harpeville. No one ever believes that. I knew it was true. The gentleman spoke about the flag at Costa Mesa. Great idea. I'll mention it to our Arts Commission guy and send an email to our Arts Commission folks, and they'd love to hear that. It's a fun idea. I have heard that art is subjective, though, so it can be anything. That's right. There is no real beauty. It's just subjective, so be careful. With regard to strategic planning, from what I got from our consultant, we're really going to be looking at existing strategic plan and more updating and revisiting that. And they're really... I don't think there is an agenda, so I don't think there's any sneaky... Anything sneaky about that. But however, I do, I have long been a proponent of trying to get our city council agendas and all kinds of agendas out far further out and far in advance than what is required because I'd like the community to have time to give input. I'd like the time to have... I'd like the time to visit with people in my community to talk about issues that are today because I get agendas Thursday evening. And then, you know, it's Tuesday. It's Tuesday in the meeting, so it's only a couple of working days to address that stuff. Most important thing is it is so liberating. It's no Plexiglas. And I've been asking for months about it. And we obviously don't have it for all our visitors, and I'm glad to see it gone. I don't know, maybe staff wants this here. I guess that's okay. I don't know if our public wants the Plexiglas, but I'd certainly be a support removing that as well. It sure feels great to have it gone. Last item, I'm getting... I know our Chief of Police was working on getting flock cameras set up. I know the goal was fall of last year. I've heard several comments, people asking about cameras. And I even had someone approach me about cameras in parks. And so, Lorraine, maybe you can update us on the flock camera systems or Chief Lawrence can speak to it. And that's all today. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next up, from District 5, is Councilmember Arliss Reynolds.
Thank you. Well, it was really nice to start with the Costa Mesa Women's Club. I hadn't realized that they were 113 years, you know, they've taken off. One thing that I thought of while they were talking about the history is whether we have one of those historical markers. Looking at, I think that's our Parks and Community Services Department. Maybe our historical committee could look into that. I think that would be a really nice site to add a marker and maybe a plaque with some information about the Women's Club. I wanted to thank staff for the first of many town halls that they hosted online related to the residential permit parking program. I think those have continued to be the most attended Zoom town halls that we have. And I thought our staff and consultant team did a really great job answering all of the questions. I'm excited to see that program roll out. I think there's still a lot of misunderstanding in terms of how the program's going to work. And so the sooner we get it moving, I think a lot of those things will be cleared up. So good job on that. Happy to see this finally come into fruition after, I think, four years ago that we started it up. A quick request for Public Works. There's a lot of questions about Wilson Street and when the lines will be repainted. I understand there's some concerns about the initial paving project. I think it'd be really helpful if we can get an update on that just to share with the community and maybe also get that update out through social media and the newsletter. But if we can get an update just on the status of that tonight, that would be really helpful. Completely agree with the comments on bus shelters. I think I looked into the numbers once, and somewhere between a third and a half of our shelters have... I'm sorry, our bus stops have benches and shelters. And that becomes a real issue both on rainy days and on very hot days. So I'm interested in what solutions we might have there to provide better and cleaner services at our bus shelters. And a couple of things that have been keeping me up at night related to the comments that we heard on rent and the amount of money and stress is associated with the high rents in the city. It's a real challenge that we talked a lot about the end of last year and have learned a lot about through our housing element process. In our last meeting, I think we talked about continuing to get information out about the rental resources that we have now. We, you know, I think with several channels, we can get that out through. I know we've made a lot of connections with our community organizations, so continuing that direct communication would be great. If we don't have it, it'd be great to have some of those resource... Information about those resources out in front of City Hall, maybe even in our park, in our parks that have bulletin boards, just to continue to create awareness about those existing resources. But I expect this to be a big part of our discussion on Friday is just what can we continue to do for the residents that are... The majority of our residents who are really struggling with rent right now. Related to that, there's been a lot of information in the news about the food, the impending food cliff as COVID funds that have been paying for a lot of fresh food to get to our lower-income residents, supporting our food pantries that people have become to depend. supporting our food pantries that people have become to depend on. That money is going away, I think, at the end of this month. And as we all know, food prices have risen, and it's creating some alarm bells that I'm concerned about, and I'm not quite sure how much that impacts our residents. And I'd like to understand that a little bit more. A lot of the concerns are especially for our senior population who, in addition to those who are hard hit financially, may have less mobility to access certain food drives. So I know I've asked about our waitlist for Meals on Wheels and who's no longer getting services. I'd like to understand a little bit more about what the current status is and what we can do to address that challenge. So two difficult things for us to, to deal with. A couple of things for your calendar. March 29th, I'm really excited. Councilmember Marr and I are going to be hosting a Women in Engineering night. We've been coordinating with the Newport Mesa School District and their Career Technical Education Program to highlight Women in Engineering and highlight some of the students at our local high schools who are in the engineering program. That's going to be a fun night. And then, looking far ahead, Saturday, May 27th, some of our Bike Committee members have been collaborating with Newport Mesa, a couple Orange County Health, Orange County Healthcare Agency and several other agencies on the first of what we hope will be many bike safety festivals. And this one's especially exciting because we're going to have an e-bike module. So this will be the, the first in, again, hopefully, a series of programs that we support to increase rider education and safety specifically around e-bikes. So May 27th is going to be a big festival, music, food, biking, fun. I hope you're all there. Thank you.
All right. Next up from District Four is Councilmember Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, everyone, for joining us today. I have a couple of updates, a few asks for staff, and then a request from my council. I had the great pleasure this last week of joining Mayor Stevens at the Stever Youth Leadership Council. And the mayor and I did a Q and A with a few members of the SOI program where they asked us questions. And boy, did they have a lot of asks. So for staff, just be aware that in a few moments, I'll ask you for a few things that the kids asked us. But what was really great about joining the mayor in that event was just seeing how much knowledge are you have of the city and how much they know hands on the needs are. And I want to highlight why they know that. It's because most of them walk. Because they're walking, they know the areas that need assistance. Because they're walking, they know the areas that have not enough lighting. Because they're walking, they know firsthand what areas of town needs more attention. So as we move forward, I always say this, but whenever you talk to young person, ask them what they want to see from Costa Mesa, because odds are, they're seeing it from a whole different lens than we're seeing it up in the dais. I also had the opportunity to join Councilmember Gamaros at this past Saturday's shredding and trash pickup event hosted by a senior woman called Pinares. It was a really amazing event. You had three bins ready to get trash picked up, and more importantly, you had the opportunity for folks to simply dispose of some sensitive documents at that site. I want to thank the senior woman for doing that event in Costa Mesa. And more importantly, I want to thank her for working with staff to pick up large items around the areas. Thank you to staff for doing that, and thank you to senior woman Pinares for that event. And finally, my last update is I did have the chance to meet with the Prontores Salud, the Orange County, the group that's come to speak today about rent control. We had a really good group of discussion about the needs of their districts, in their districts. And what I'll share with my council peers, and it may have been lost a bit in translation, was they did offer to take each of you to your district to tour the parts of town they're referring to. As you know, we have districts in Costa Mesa in large part because the longest time we did not have a Latino city council. As such, in 2016, the city council voted to do districts to make a Hispanic majority district, or District Four. That being said, there's not, there are not only Hispanics in District Four. They're all over the city. And a lot of times, living in some of the most inhumane housing in, in Costa Mesa. So I really want to challenge my council peers to take up on their offer, to tour these sites, and see how we can better assist them. And now for the asks. So first and foremost, I'll begin with Public Works. So I want to see an update to see if we have, if we're going to stripe the red curbs on Wallace and Chalamet, and Wallace and James. There's a lot of community members in the Chalamet community that mentioned cars don't always stop at the stop sign, and I think red curbs will help with visibility. I also had a request from a member of SOI, a junior at St. High School, if we can install more lights down Wallace, because it's very dark, and when she's walking home from SOI, she has the, feels the need to have her keys in her pocket. So I know we don't handle lights, but if you talk to Edison, see if we can have that situation addressed. I really appreciate it. I also have had a few calls from residents that live on Meyer Street that the South Roundabout isn't working as intended. There's a lot of people that are cutting across and not following it properly. So I want to see if we can do an update on that plan to still encourage folks to drive slower while reducing the risk to pedestrians and drivers. And finally, this is something that I haven't heard addressed much, and I know it's because housing's a focal point. But I don't want to miss an opportunity to be really creative. The longest time in Costa Mesa, we had a lot of talk about, you know, being climate, preparing for climate, preparing for the inevitability that our environment is going to change, and that we need to be climate resilient. But we haven't had a lot of work be done on that. So, City Manager, if you can please give us an update on our climate action plan, and more importantly, if we're not done so, I want to request that we do an RFP for our climate action plan so that as we work on the housing element, we can work in conjunction with the climate action plan to make sure anything we build in Costa Mesa is going to be resilient in the future. And with that, I'll just say, thank everyone for joining us again. To all the kids from CM High School, thank you for being here, and have fun in the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is from District Two, Councilmember Lauren Gamaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had an opportunity last week to meet with Senator Dave Minn. And one of the things that we did is we toured one of the high schools in our city. We went to Estancia High School to look at their engineering program. A few weeks ago, I got to go to Costa Mesa High Schools as where, as well. But in particular, I was so impressed with what the school has been utilizing to try and educate some of our students. I wanted to try and get some more eyes on this, and I thought, well, let's see if we can get the senator down here, and maybe we can get some more attention. And we just kind of decided that we would start with Estancia. And it was, it was overwhelming, to say the least. The attention that is being brought forth to our youth to try and prepare them for what they have to come is insurmountable. Right now, we have CTE funds. These are called California Career Technical Education Funds. I travel all over the state of California, and school districts are utilizing these funds for various things all over Southern California, probably Northern California, too, but I don't get out that far. I have to say without a doubt that Costa Mesa, Newport Mesa Unified School District, is utilizing these funds better than any other school district than I've ever seen. So I just want to give a big thanks to our school district. I want to give a big thanks to Estancia and Costa Mesa High School. They're doing a wonderful job in preparing our students for engineering, construction, the arts, any possible facet that you can think of, they're looking at it. I can remember, when I was young, I went to woodshop. We had shop class, metal, plastic, wood. We don't have that anymore. So where does the funding come from? We have to outsource the funding. Well, our school district is utilizing an entire department to make sure that we're preparing our students with just those things. So it's really important to have the right tools so that when they leave high school, they're prepared for what's to come. And you never know, you might end up back in the city right here, working here, with some of the education and preparation that you get. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, from District Six, on the East Side, our own Mayor Pro Tem Jeffrey Harland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few brief items tonight. First, like Councilmember Harper, I like the idea of maybe a redesign of our city flag. I think that's something worth, worth considering. I want to respond to the comments by Ms. Martin and Ms. Tanaka about our bus shelters. I wholeheartedly agree. Ever since it was brought to my attention by Ms. Tanaka not too long ago, I've been paying much more attention. We definitely need to clean up those areas. And I've asked staff to consider maybe some individual project sites for Love Costa Mesa Day. So that's something that we're, we're looking at as well. And Mrs. Farrell Harrison, if you wouldn't mind advising us when the bus advertising contract is coming up, I think that also might provide an, an opportunity for us to take a look at the facilities. I did have a meeting this last Tuesday at the request of some businesses on 17th Street. CMPD, Lieutenant Chamnis, Lieutenant Stafford, oh, Lieutenant Chamnis is here, Crime Prevention Specialist Martinez, and our Neighborhood Improvement Manager Nate Robbins all met with some local businesses who've had some concerns about transients in the area and how to deal with them. And this is really the beginning of a discussion with the department and businesses about how potentially we could roll out some kind of neighborhood watch program for businesses. So we're in the input gathering stage. I think this is a very fruitful first discussion. If anything, there was a network of businesses in and around the East Side that I think are really getting to know each other and advise each other of situations that they're dealing with. And that's been really quite helpful. So a good first step. And then lastly, I wanted to comment, something caught my eye on social media today. It was a, a video that seems to perpetuate some misinformation about a project on the East Side. This is the Project Home Key Project at Motel Six. That's the East Side of Newport Boulevard at the corner, I think it's of Albert Place. This is not a homeless shelter. I know my colleagues and I have said this repeatedly, but it's worth repeating. It is not a homeless shelter. It is 88 units of housing dedicated to seniors and veterans. There's a lot of information on our website. In fact, I'm looking at the city's website right now. Anybody who has questions can find out about funding, specific resources. We have a local developer, Community Development Partners, that is actually building the project in two phases. Mercy House is providing support services, and we'll also have a property manager on site. So this is actually a really good project. We, our approach to homelessness starts with a housing-first model. We need to get people in shelter, safe shelter, stable shelter, so they can get the help that they need. And so I think this council will continue to support these kinds of efforts. I'm very proud of the vote that we took to allocate funding for this, and I'm looking forward for that development. And if somebody has any questions about it, please feel free to contact me. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it's my turn. So regarding the retreat that we're going to have on Friday, I just want to let everybody know, it's, if you're an early riser, it starts at 8:00 a.m. The public is welcome. It's at the Norma Herzog Center, and it goes to 3:00 p.m. So that's a long time. If you get there early at 8:00 a.m., there'll probably be enough donuts for the public. There was last time we did it, some coffee. And so we'll have some refreshments for the public, too. You're welcome to come and watch us do this. I know a lot of people have to work, but some people don't. And so those of you that are available are welcome. So Councilmember Gamaros and I went to a thing, it's called Labors of Love. It's an offshoot of, of Love Costa Mesa. And what happens is, we had some members of our code enforcement team there. And when there are code enforcement issues that, that bubble up through complaints to code enforcement about residents that are not maintained very well or have code enforcement violations, they're connected with Labors of Love. And this was up, this particular one was up over off of South Coast Drive in that area by Wacon Park. And they spent three hours there and just really transformed this place. And I'd like us to think of ways to connect them with resources. And if anybody wants to volunteer, let me know. It's run by Raina Cuthill, who also heads up the Love Costa Mesa Day. And I'm just going to go through this stuff really quick. So I was at the UCI Health Center ribbon cutting, which was great. That's over on Newport Boulevard, right south of what used to be the Outback Steakhouse, not too far away from our animal shelter. That's going to be a great asset to the community. Yeah, I had a great time with the students from SOI. Councilmember Chavez was right on point. The questions they asked, the follow-up questions, really listening and engaging with them was great. Next time we have a meeting is March 21st. We're going to have a Norris proclamation, and folks are going to gather out here to do a celebration and recognition of Norris a little before the meeting, as early as four o'clock. But I mean, if you get there by 5:00, 5:30, if you want to participate in the celebration, you're welcome to do that. And then we'll have the proclamation at the next meeting. So Costa Mesa Little League, they already started their games, but they're going to have their official opening day where we throw out the first pitch and things of that nature on Saturday. So please come to that. I think that, that starts at 8:30. And then the very next week, some of this was postponed because of the rain. Pony is having their opening day. Regarding bus shelters, just a little bit of history. I do agree that we need to address bus shelters, and they should be nice. So I was just talking about this yesterday. Back in 2011 and 2012, there was a group that got together and they said, what are we going to do about homelessness in the city of Costa Mesa? And they prepared a document. The document exists somewhere. I've read it. It's been many years since I've read it. And there were really a lot of different voices on that committee. And one of the voices which kind of got some traction in, in, in the following years on the, on the city council was, the way to address homelessness is to make city, the city so uncomfortable and painful to live as a homeless person that you would want to live somewhere else. And one of the strategies was to make our bus stations, stops as, as uncomfortable, as painful on the homeless, so the homeless would go to Huntington Beach, go to Irvine. Of course, it was a completely failed strategy and the backfire of it, and we've completely changed that. We don't think about the problem that way, and we've addressed the problem and made great strides, as we've talked about many times. But the, but the side effect of that is, we've now made bus stops very inhospitable for people who want to ride the bus. And now, as we move into a council that's prioritizing active transportation and sustainability, we've really trained, turned the corner. And I would like us to focus on those bus shelters and make them nice, so people will be encouraged to ride their buses and be safe while doing it. And then we address homelessness in a, in another more compassionate and effective way, as we've been doing for a number of years. Regarding the gentleman who talked about the state of emergency, yes, agreed. That's coming to our council to unwind some of those ordinances at our next meeting on the 21st. Right now, as we speak, Pacifica Christian is playing Orange Lutheran. Pacifica Christian's in Newport, but that's right on the border. They're playing Olu, which is a powerhouse sports team. And if they win that game, they'll go to the state championship and face the Northern California team. And this is in basketball, in boys' basketball. Again, I'm bouncing around quite a bit. I've got a couple more things. I went to the OCBC dinner, and this is quite a deal. It's like, God, thousands of people at this thing. I had to park two, two miles away and get shuttled to it, no joke. And I sat with the mayor of, mayor, the mayor of Santa Ana, Valerie Mesqua, David Penalozza, who I think is the mayor pro tem, and Kim, Kim Nguyen, his, his girlfriend, who's the mayor and, sorry, the council member in, in Garden Grove and is, is running for, I think it's the, I think she's running for Congress, actually. Anyway, so there were several OCBC, they recognize certain large projects. This year, they recognize OC Vibe, which is happening in Anaheim. They recognize the City of Hope, the, the harbor in Dana Point that's being completely redone, and a complete redo of, an expansion of, oh, sorry, the UCI Medical Center. But the reason I was there, I was invited by Related Bristol, and I'm not sure if you guys all know about Related Bristol, but that borders Costa Mesa. It's going to be on Bristol between Sunflower and, and MacArthur. And over a many-phase, many-year time, they're going to add a lot of housing. And over many phase, many year time, they're going to add a lot of housing, a lot of retail and restaurant, a hotel, assisted living for the seniors, and a park, Bristol Central Park, a plaza, and create a really, really interesting and different environment over 41 acres. So I was pleased that at least someplace neighboring Costa Mesa was recognized by the Orange County Business Council. The last thing I'll say, as I met yesterday with Nate Robbins, and Habitat for Humanity, Habitat for Humanity is, of course, the purpose of that is to bring affordable housing to people who need it, particularly people who can get into ownership of housing. And it's a very interesting program. They'd like to do more work in Costa Mesa. I'm all for it. They've got one project pending in our planning department. I hope that moves forward and that we have more engagement with Habitat for Humanity to address the issues that Mayor Pro Tem was talking about, which is, we need, if we're going to address homelessness and some of the issues that were raised earlier by the residents, we have to have more housing and more affordable housing. So that's all I have. City manager, for your report, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of updates for everyone here. First, I wanted to start with just little housekeeping, and thank you to our Public Works team for the City Hall painting project, which is complete. We've gotten a lot of compliments from the public on the City Hall facelift, and so just wanted to thank Public Works and our maintenance folks and the contractors involved in that project, just for brightening and sprucing up the City Hall despite the weather conditions and doing it within budget and ahead of schedule. And so we're really thankful of that. And next, we'll have our PD headquarters that will be refurbishing on the outside as well. Happy Women in Construction Week. Well, March is Women's History Month. This week is Women in Construction Week. We have many dedicated engineers on the city staff who work for the city of Costa Mesa to aid the construction of city projects or developments. It's okay. I think we can just, we can just do an audio on this if we don't have the visuals up. Okay. But we wanted to thank our city engineers, but most importantly, wanted to just thank city council members, Maran Reynolds, for their contributions to a lot of the engineering work that we do, always giving your advice and lending your expertise to so many of the city's projects. We're lucky to have both you and Councilmember Mar on the team, if you will, just helping to guide some of these projects. And of course, we have the women in our Public Works and Development Services departments that are also engineers, all contributing to the designing, building, maintaining, and inspecting of the city's public and private infrastructure on a daily basis. And so we're really lucky to have that kind of talent on our bench. Regarding committees, we're still looking for volunteers, so the Costa Mesa City Council is currently seeking residents to serve on the following city committees. We need more volunteers for Animal Services Committee, our Active Transportation Committee, Fairview Park Steering, Finance and Pension Advisory Committee, Historical Preservation Committee, Housing and Public Service Grants Committee, and the Mobile Home Park Advisory Committee. Applications are available on our website, and so we encourage you to please participate. Next, I wanted to just give an update on some of the issues we've been hearing on the floor related to housing, rental assistance, and also rent stabilization, questions that have come up or concerns that have come up as well. And so I just wanted to mention that we'll be having a Fair Housing Foundation workshop. This will be held on March 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in our City Hall Community Room. It will be bilingual, and representatives from the Fair Housing Foundation will be in attendance, as well as city staff, to answer questions. Our constituent services team is working with local programs and nonprofits to schedule future workshops to better inform our residents about programs and services. As you recall, we had an English-language workshop back in September. We're also working on a brochure in both English and Spanish to have as a community resource, and we will absolutely have that available in our different facilities as well. And then we also sent to Juana Trejo, and I think the Promotoras, the information regarding the Public Law Center and their services, as you requested, Mayor. And so we're getting the word out continuously, and we'll keep doing that. I think the brochure will be a really good resource as well, just for us all to have handy. I did want to mention a special program, the SoCal Gas Assistance Program. For anybody who's interested in that, SoCal Gas offers a variety of customer assistance programs that may be able to help pay for gas bills. Many of our residents are experiencing disproportionately high gas bills, and so SoCal Gas is offering $10 million in shareholder funding to help customers of theirs with some of their bills. And so please avail yourselves of that. The company is committed to providing $5 million to the Gas Assistance Fund, and that's for income-qualified customers with one-time grants to help pay their natural gas bills. And then there's also $4 million to its Popular Fueling Our Communities program, which is a collaboration with local food banks and nonprofits to provide free meals and groceries. They'll contribute $1 million in aid to fund small restaurants and to help with improvements, upgrades, employee retention, losses in rising costs. And so SoCal Gas is partnering with Share Ourselves to accept applications. Please contact Share Ourselves at 949-270-2100. That's 949-270-2100, and we'll have this information available on our website as well. The agency will accept calls to schedule appointments for the program from Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then I just wanted to touch on some of the comments on the floor this evening regarding, I'll start with the emergency declaration. Under my authority as the Director of Emergency Services, I have already entered in orders to end the emergency consistent with the state emergency. My orders are effective immediately but must be ratified by the city council, and so I will be bringing that to you at the next meeting for ratification. But as of today, we no longer have an emergency declaration in the city of Costa Mesa that will not detrimentally impact our American Rescue Plan Act funds. We still have those funds, and we can still expand those funds consistent with federal guidelines. Just wanted to clarify that. Regarding the update on the flock cameras, the chief has reported that they were installed two weeks ago. The full installation was completed as of then. We've already been able to apprehend three stolen vehicles that were occupied, some felony arrests there, and then also were able to make some arrests related to three bikes that were stolen from one of our local e-bike shops. And so we know that that's actually bearing fruit. It's also a key tool for us to use when it comes to Amber Alert or kidnapping or anything of that sort, and so that's working very well. Thanks to the chief for that update. Councilmember Chavez, on some of the projects that you mentioned for Public Works, we spoke about those a couple of weeks ago, I think, and so Raj's team is exploring those and analyzing those different projects and their adequacy in those areas. And so, you know, he'll get back to you offline, because each is different and requires its own analysis, and so we'll get back to you on that. The bus shelters. Bus shelters are a challenge, is an ongoing challenge for many cities. There aren't many vendors in this space. We work with Clear Channel. We have a contract. We will absolutely look at the contract and when it's up for renewal and hope to renegotiate an even stronger deal. We notice every city employee is an ambassador of the city. When they are out and about, they will call in what they're seeing as well, and when we see that there is trash overrunning, it's of major concern to all of us. Raj meets with Clear Channel about every six months, just to keep that going and as needed as well, to enhance the services. And then we also have our own maintenance crews that go out and supplement Clear Channel's work. And in some locations, we might be out there two, three times a week, especially for the heavily-used shelters in our major corridors. And so we do supplement that, just to make sure that there's cleanliness. We're also looking at larger receptacles to assist with that. But absolutely, we agree, and we'll put together a plan to kind of strengthen all of our resources in that area, because a clean Costa Mesa is an even more beautiful Costa Mesa, and so we couldn't agree with you more on that. And if there are some funds that I can utilize from the contingency bucket, just to make sure that we have enough maintenance coverage there, and anything else that we can bring to bear, we will do that as well. So thank you for that feedback. And I think that covers, that covers everything. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't, I don't, could we get an update on the Wilson Street paving project?
Well, yeah, Wilson Street painting? Sure, of course. Yes. Raj, you have the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds, yeah, Wilson Street paving was done back in December. However, we noticed that due to weather-related issues, some of the paving is not, didn't hold up well. The compaction was not acceptable to the city. So we've been talking to our contractor, and there's actually been, even tomorrow, to talk about how they can remedy that situation. Right now, we have temporary markers to provide that striping, but we want to make sure that the contractor does this right and implement the striping. We might even consider putting in temporary striping while we wait for the contractor, but this should be done shortly.
Thank you. Is that, is that sufficient?
Yeah, it sounds like, I was going to ask.
Oh.
Sorry, I was going to ask for an update on timing. It sounds like you'll have a better update next week, since you'll, you're meeting with the contractor tomorrow?
Yes, we'll have a better update.
I'll ask again next time. Thanks.
Yes, of course.
Raj, did I understand you correctly? You said that the compaction did not come up on the asphalt?
That's correct.
What was the compaction requirement?
It should be at 90, 95%, and we had anywhere from 90 to, some locations were as low as 90. And when that happens, you'll see some unraveling of the asphalt. And, and it's, it's a mistake. They agree, too, that the weather didn't cooperate with them. It's, it was too cold when they did that work, and it stayed cold for a long time. So, so we need to rectify that.
Okay, I would like to be updated on that as well. Thank you.
Yes, I'll send an update.
We're all good? Okay, let's go to Ms. Barlow. Do you have a city attorney report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things in response to the speakers who commented that they had landlords or property owners who were raising rents above the legal amount. I thought I might provide some resources. The Fair Housing Council of Orange County does enforcement. They can be reached at 1-800-698-3247. Orange County Legal Aid also provides services, 714-571-5200. There's a Veterans Hotline, which is the same number with an 800 area code. Again, that's 571-5200. And the Public Law Center, 714-541-1010. There are also a number of resources available through various community groups that can assist tenants who are having that kind of problem. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, wonderful. So now we're going to move to the consent calendar. We have seven consent calendar items. They'll be handled in one motion unless any of the items are pulled by the council or by members of the public or staff. Madam clerk, did anybody pull anything today?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Wow, all right, good stuff. I have to recuse myself from three because of campaign donations from one of the recipients. So with that noted, I'll request a motion. A motion by Councilmember Chavez.
Move the balance.
And, or move the whole thing, not just the balance.
No balance today.
Yeah, no balance. Okay, and then seconded by Harlan. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 6-0.
Wonderful. All right, so we got two new business items today, and that's it. So the first new business item comes from the city clerk's office. We're here, let's do, Madam clerk, could you please read the item?
Yes, this is dissolving city council ad hoc committees, and the presentation is by Ms. Green, city clerk.
Ms. Green, you have, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This item has been brought forth at council's request for your consideration as dissolving all council ad hoc committees or to dissolve specific ad hoc committees only. This ends the report, and I'm available to answer your questions.
Wow, that was, breaks the record. Did anybody put a timer on that? Yes, way to go. For future reference, that's the gold standard for staff reports. Okay, so any questions? No? No questions? Okay, then I'll open up to the public.
Sorry, Mayor, I do.
I'm sorry, yes, Councilmember Reynolds.
I think I read my staff report too early this time. I forgot to follow up on all my questions. So there was one of, I'm fully, well, there was one of, one of these committees, I think, has a little bit of unfinished business, the City Manager Ad Hoc Committee. And I wanted to get some input from the city manager. One of the things that we were supposed to do was develop a evaluation criteria and I think an approach to the annual city manager reviews, and we haven't done that yet. So maybe a question for the city manager. Do you have a recommended approach on how we do that? Because I know there's, there were some different challenges in terms of when and how we can have those conversations. Sorry to throw this question on you. Forgot to ask.
That's okay. We talked a little bit about it a couple of days ago. I think I'm perfectly happy with the entire council being involved in that process and it not being the ad hoc. I think that works. That's fine.
Okay.
And I think that's probably more in line with how it should be.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Yep.
Right. Good stuff. Okay, and then so with that, why don't we open it up for the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. I don't think I have a particular opinion about the dissolving this particular set of committees. I understand the reason to, but I guess I would talk more broadly about ad hoc committees and specific topics, where I would say that there is a necessary and useful flexibility that ad hoc committees give local government. And so I, I think about, you know, my old local government in Isla Vista, California, and when I went to UC Santa Barbara, that would have ad hoc committees for particular subjects that were much smaller than the city council would deal with as a special district. But that, you know, they developed parameters with their staff for what an ad hoc committee could look like. And so for an example, they didn't, they didn't go as far as to have like a Brown Act parameters or a Brown Act notice and have it be a public meeting, but they, you know, livestreamed, you know, one of these ad hoc meetings. They had public participation available, but they didn't go as far as the Brown Act required, which gave them the flexibility to, you know, have a meeting at a coffee shop or do what they needed to do as an ad hoc committee for the business at hand, while still involving the public to some extent and having a process where there could be more, more transparent participation without the heavy hand of the Ralph M. Brown Act. And so I would actually just encourage this, this body to consider kind of parameters that, may there be an ad hoc committee in the future, which may be necessary? What are the associated parameters with which that ad hoc committee abides? And so, like I said, is it have to, does there have to be some sort of public notice or can there be some citizen participation or et cetera? So I'd ask you to consider those thoughts in this endeavor here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak to this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So let's close public comment. I'll make a motion to dissolve the following city ad hoc committees. Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee, Fairview Developmental Center Ad Hoc Committee, Housing Ad Hoc Committee, and the City Manager Ad Hoc Committee, which is all of the ad hoc committees that we currently have.
Second?
Second by Councilmember Chavez. Yeah, so several, was it one of our recent study sessions, several council members raised that we want to move away from these ad hoc committees. I had thought about it and brought it up before. So an ad hoc committee at its, at its best, and I think that some, at least... at its, at its best, and, and I think that some, at least one of these, more of the housing ad hoc committee, was pretty much on track. At, at its best, an ad hoc committee focuses on one thing, and then when that's done, they're gone. What's happened here, I think, is what we've had ad hoc committees that have had a bit of scope creep and has turned into what appears to be more standing committees. Standing committees are required to meet in public. The cannabis ad hoc committee certainly would qualify. The cannabis ad hoc committee has been in place since middle of 2020, when we considered Measure Q. So, it's long since outlasted its usefulness as an ad hoc committee and become more of a de facto stand, standing committee, which should be meeting in public if, if it meets at all. Same would be true with Fairview Developmental Center. You know, the city manager ad hoc committee was originally convened to hire our city manager, do the city manager search, and our city manager is looking forward to her fourth, fourth anniversary at the, at the city. So, it's been around for a long time, four and a, four and a half years, something like that. So, there's a certain, I think, I agree with the speaker. We need to be a little bit more careful, not only about, at, not only about, you know, establishing the ad hoc committees, but making sure that they have a limited and appropriate duration. That's the reason for me bringing it up and I think probably the others too, but I can't speak for them. Councilmember Chavez, do you have anything to say?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I think you do a really good job of explaining the, the time, or maybe rephrase that. You do go explaining why the time has come to end these ad hocs. I think we've seen the effects of ad hoc in this diocese and that some people end up having more expertise in an item than others, and that leads to confusions. And I think for the good of the community, it's best to just have the entire council address these key issues. So, I'll be supporting the motion as well.
Any other council members wish to speak to the motion? Okay. I don't see any. So, let's call for the question.
Motion carries six zero.
Way to go. Okay. Now, we have our, thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you for that excellent and brief staff report. And now, we are on to new business item number two. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes, this is professional services agreement with the Solis Group for administration of the Community Workforce Agreement, presentation by Mr. Seth Raman, Public Works Director.
Mr. Seth Raman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This item is for the award of professional services agreement with the Solis Group for the administration of Community Workforce Agreement. The goal of the CWA Community Workforce Agreement is to develop a locally-trained workforce in the construction profession that includes residents, students, underrepresented groups, and veterans. The city council at your February 1, 2022, meeting approved the Community Workforce Agreement between the city and the Los Angeles, Orange County's Building and Construction Trades Council. So, in order to do the administration of this, the city solicited proposals from consultants who specialize in that field. The selection committee reviewed the proposals and determined that the Solis Group is the most qualified consultant. They provide similar services to other cities throughout Southern California. So, as part of the proposal, staff also looked at what does it cost to do this administration? And we gave a sample $3 million fire station project with subcontractors and an estimated construction duration of 12 months. And they estimated that the cost of that is about $40,000, so at 1.3% of the project costs, which we felt is reasonable for, for this kind of services. So, with that, staff request city council award the professional service agreement to the Solis Group for a not-to-exceed amount of $400,000 for a term of three years with two-year, one, two one-year extensions. We have Mr. Jeremy Turner and Mr. Isaac Hernandez from the Solis Group in the audience. So, staff and consultants are available to answer any questions you may have. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions of staff or of the contractor? Yes, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, one quick question. So, it had noted an, an error in the original staff report. Is that correction in the updated recommendation or would that need to be clarified in the, in the motion?
The, the, inadvertently, we, we included an older version of the, the original appendix attachment F was included, which had the oldest of projects. The actual agreement does not have, has a corrected attachment. So, we don't need to do anything with that.
Okay. So, the actual agreement didn't have that?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Camaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I don't know if this question should be directed towards you or to the applicant. I would prefer to ask the applicant, if that's okay?
That's fine. Good evening.
So, I have a few questions regarding your apprenticeship and how you're gonna deal with enforcement of that. So, if I could refer you, do you guys have the, the contract in front of you, page 51 or page eight? I don't know which one it is. I have two page numbers in here.
I don't know if I have the contract in front of me.
Specifically, the CWA implementation plan. That's what I'm referring to.
Page 58? Oh, thank you.
In the staff report, it's page 51. I believe in your submittal to the city, it was page eight.
I see.
Okay. So, in the lower right-hand corner of this, under the project timeline, you guys have some bullets here. You have craft request forms. Here, it says to facilitate communication between Union Hall contractors, aid contractors in reaching out to MC3 community organizations as necessary. Can, can you speak to that and explain what exactly you mean by that?
Um, yes. So, one of the best resources for contractors to meet these goals is using MC3 programs. If they're not able to get local workers through the Union Hall, and of course, the MC3 graduates are also considered local residents as part of the, as part of the agreement, as part of the local goal. But if a contractor is unable to reach the local goal using craft request forms to the Union Hall, MC3 programs, we find are one of the best resources. The MC3s are, I, I know some of you are familiar with. The MC3 is a pre-apprenticeship program sponsored by the building trades. So, we find that those are some of the best resources to be able to sponsor in workers. If the contractor is not able to reach the goal with their own workforce or with requesting workers from the hall, is to go through the MC3s to be able to sponsor on graduates, to be able to booster up their local hire goals. Is that, or is their local workforce? Is that answering your question?
So far.
Okay.
So, in your very next bullet here, you have goal attainment. It says that you're gonna send notices to the contractors not meeting the goals. Do you have an enforcement policy on that? Or what, what's the, what's the logistical process moving forward, say, for a contractor that's not meeting their ratios or their goals for either the state, county, or federal requirements?
Sure. And I'm glad you brought that up. The, the state has requirements for apprentices. And so, we do have enforcement as far as if a contractor is not meeting the required ratio for apprentices, then yes, we do, they are, we do report that to the state. And, and we do collect any kind of good faith efforts, documentation that's required in order to show if, if they are complying with the law. Beyond that, for, for the local hire goals, in the agreement as, as written, there isn't a, an enforcement policy. If the contractor is not meeting the goal, there isn't, there isn't a penalty currently. That's something we would need to work with the city. We've worked with other agencies where, we've, we've worked with agencies that have gone so far as to have penalties or like liquidated damages for not meeting the goals to, to maybe just at least including a, a penalty for, not including good faith effort documentation. We, we work with a number of agencies where, hey, we're working with a contractor that they're not meeting the goals. Okay. Well, show me, what have you done? Have you requested, have you submitted that craft request form requesting workers from the hall? Have you reached out to the MC3 programs or, or say, helmets to hard hats? What have you done or what are the barriers that you're reaching and have you documented them? And if you're not able to prove that, then, then that's also maybe room for potential penalties. But that's something we would need to work with the city on, on being, being able to determine.
So, I would like to implore you with great emphasis that you manage that because it's particularly important in our community that we establish very strict parameters regarding the implementation of apprentices on these prevailing wage projects, local hire, direct entry, veteran hire, stuff like that. I really want to make sure that if we're going to utilize your services, that we are actually utilizing your services and that you are doing what you say and you're saying what you do. So, I, I wanna, I wanna take you at your word and good faith that you definitely are gonna utilize that. And I hope, moving forward, when we do have these contracts come up, that we're utilizing you for that. Indeed, we do get the return on our investment, okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of council? Councilmember Harper?
Councilmember, can you hear me?
Yes, of course.
Councilmember, thank you for the questions. Those are good questions. And could you help me understand what an MC3 program is? You're a union guy. I'm not. So, maybe he wants to answer it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think you want me to answer. So, an MC3 program, it is a pre-apprenticeship program. It's, it is sponsored by the building trades. The, the aim is to help people gain the skills necessary to start in apprenticeships. I think what was found was that over time and more recent years, people were starting into the, the apprenticeship programs and they weren't ready. And so, they, they set up these MC3 programs in order to help, help people who are interested in getting into the trades to actually get some of the skills necessary to understand what they're getting into, to get exposure to the different apprenticeship programs, what their actual requirements are, what they actually entail, so that then these individuals are ready to actually start a career in the building trades.
These are trade schools in a general sense, maybe?
Essentially, yes.
Fair, fair way to describe it. Okay. So, what Councilmember Camaro just asked you was, I'm not sure where the penalties come from because I know our contract, our PLA contract, is good faith, best efforts. There's no default provision. So, I pointed this out when, when the majority voted for it here. So, I don't know how you do what he just asked, and I'd like to know. And that's a good question. I just don't know how you, how you leverage that.
Right. Um, part of it is making sure that we're communicating with the contractors, making sure they understand where they stand, making sure they understand the goals from the start. Some of it is building relationships, encouraging them to, part of it is the apprenticeship requirement. They're required to use apprentices as part of the law. They're required to, to bring apprentices apart as part of their workforce. And so, that's one of the resources I always bring. When a contractor says, hey, why do I need to do this? You need to use apprentices. You need to request apprentices from the hall, whether, whether or not, wherever they're coming from, you need to meet this requirement. This is the law.
Based on what law?
It's the California Labor Code.
California Labor Code says you gotta have so many apprentices.
Yeah.
In a union shop.
They don't have to be from the union, but they, they do have to be apprentices.
They have to be apprentices.
And so.
Oh, any contractor doing, sorry, I'm getting an education here. Any contractor in a public service sector, certain number of apprentices, no matter whether you're union or non-union contractor?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
So, you have to request an apprentice. Why not request a local apprentice? Why not request a worker that meets these requirements? And then, you're also, you're also meeting these goals. You're also looking good. And you're helping the, you're helping the project. You're helping yourself. You're helping the city meet these goals and work together.
So, do you do these kind of contracts for non-union, non-union, non-PLA environments? In other words, do you, I'll say it this way. It looks to me like we, we signed a contract with the unions to say, good faith, we're trying to do these good things. And now, the city pays for the promotion of that, of that, those programs. And, and also some audit. I'm sure you have some audit function in this process?
Correct.
Yeah. Do I have that right?
Yes, we, we audit.
Yeah. Essentially, you're, you're promoting the use of apprentices and veterans and local Costa Mesa residents. That's your job.
Correct.
Essentially. Even though our contract, and I'm not picking on you. They know who I'm picking on. Their, their contract says, the people we did the contract with have to make best efforts to employ those people. It just seems like that the people with the contract should pay for your services, but we're paying for them. But that's, again, I guess I made it more of a question. I have some questions for staff, not these guys. If, if you want to ask questions of these guys while they're up or do you want to let them sit down? Or, you guys good? I'm trying to be polite.
If you have questions of staff, you could just keep, you have.
Go ahead and keep going.
You have the floor. So, just ask whatever question.
I'm trying to be polite. It's okay.
You're, you're polite.
Thanks, John. Mr. Seth Raman?
We have a list on, I think it's Schedule F, that lists all the projects. And those projects have amounts that are associated, estimated amounts with them. Like, we've never listed them. Why do we not list those project amounts? And could I get a list that has the project amounts? There's like $200 million in contracts here, correct, on Schedule, I think it's Schedule F?
Councilmember Harper, yeah, I mean, the, there are estimated costs for those projects. We don't have the actual.
Absolutely not.
But.
Correct.
But we have some estimated costs for those projects.
Right. And the last meeting we had about the PLA was 200 million was the estimate.
That's correct.
And, and we, we estimated, how many we thought we'd get done in the next five years of those 200 million? I remember, but go ahead. I want to ask you if you remember.
Yeah. Typically, on an annual basis, we implement anywhere from 20 to 25 million dollars worth of projects.
Okay.
It depends. Sometimes it could be higher because we get through a, a large project like a fire station or, or library project.
So, you thought, the last meeting, you thought it might be 80 million. So, you're right there, 20, 25 million. You're close. So, we've got a contract that, and this is a nuance. This might be a question for somebody else, but we got a contract that's for 400, and it looks like these projects, and maybe this is a question for you guys, one and a half, one, one to one and a half percent to 2% of a project is usually the fees you guys charge. Is that correct? Does that sound, it was, and I did that based on what you presented in your proposal. Looked like the, the percentage that, where it came in.
I think that, that sounds correct in this case. Yeah, our pricing is based on the value of the project duration and this previous, how we've billed previously on, on previous projects of similar size and scope.
Yeah, the ones you listed, it came in about one to one and a half percent on each project. And then, the one, the example you gave was 1.3. So, 1.3% of 80, 80 million is about $1,040,000. But you're presenting a staff report that's saying we need approval for $400,000. So, I'm just trying to reconcile what's, why the discrepancy. That's another question for you. You're out. You're, you're good.
So, Councilmember Harper, this is just an, an initial estimate of the number of projects that we have in the pipeline over the next, next three to five years that have a requirement of this PLA. Not every project is subject to PLA that, that we do. So, there are very selected few projects that have the PLA requirement.
Yeah. When I asked, when I asked, when we, we approved the PLA, I said, of these 200 million in projects, how many would we do in the next five years? And the answer was 80 million. So, you're changing that. You can change that answer. It's fine. If you want to say it's only 30 million in the next five years, then the, your report's okay.
Councilmember Harper, at this point, that 80 million that I gave you is for all projects, including PLA and non-PLA work. So.
Okay.
So, we, we, we kind of took an approximate $30 million worth of projects that we would be implementing in the next three to five years as the initial estimate. But again, if, if we are doing more projects, of course, we have to come back to council at that point.
Okay. So, when I read in the staff report that it says, and this is, I'm confused, PSA will be for initial three-year period with two one-year renewal periods for a total not to exceed 400,000. That's, includes the renewal. So, just renew it. We're playing on 400,000. And. And, and there's no amendment that the city manager can make with her authority to increase the 400,000, correct?
As far as I'm aware, yeah. This is an not to exceed amount. Any increase in this amount, we will come back to city council.
How do you measure what you do? And, and I know you've got some stats in here, but how do you measure what you guys provide as a service?
We measure it, one is certainly one of the most tangible things is, is the local hire percentages, is whether, whether or not we're meeting the goals, or at least whether we've seen an increase or, you know, where we're meeting them. We also look at it in terms of how many projects we've completed, how many grievances we have, if there are issues on projects, how many contractors were able to get through the process, including non-union contractors, and how well they're, they're able to complete the project without issues. But, yeah, most of it is, we're reviewing payrolls, whether or not we've catched any violations, if we do have any underpayments and how much we were, we were able to get restitution payments to workers.
Talk about that restitution pay.
For, for what's that for?
For prevailing wage violations.
Okay.
They don't come up often on PLA projects, but they do occasionally, where workers are underpaid prevailing wage and, and they are owed restitution payment.
Got it. We had a 25-mile radius requirement, and these guys are 34 miles away, which I have a problem with. But why was the 25 miles in there to begin with? Just curious. I know we amended or you countered and said, hey, we're, so, is there a reason for the 25 miles? It's not 50 miles? Did we end up excluding anybody by putting the 25 miles in there that could have bid on the project?
Consulor Harper, is this for local hires or, I'm trying to think where the 25 mile are?
Oh, it had to do with who could propose or bid on this, had to be within 25 miles of our city. And they were 34 miles, which is okay. They bid it. But someone else that got the RFP that was 50 miles away may have said, well, I'm not going to bid it. So we, we effectively, by putting 25 miles, excluded somebody that thought, is fair, right? It's a fair question.
So typically, we try to limit, like out of town, out of, not out of state contractors, consultants from bidding on projects. So we want somebody to be local who can manage the projects better. So that's the reason why we have some of these requirements.
It sounds like in the future, we should expand that on something like this. There were only two bidders, so maybe it's 100 miles or 50 miles or 75. Last request, I would love to see the projects listed with an estimated dollar amount. And please note in the minutes that I'm asking for this, the amount, and then I guess I could do the percentage, percent and a half myself, and see what the fees are going to be. And then if, if you could do the order in which those projects are going to come to the city, I'd love to see that too. If that's okay.
We'll do our best, but I'll get, we'll, we'll get you the cost.
I have no contract due, I have best efforts. That's the best I can get. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm finished, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have, I have some more. I want to, to, to Councilmember Harper's point and his question. So do you have a method in place that's going to enhance the number of, say, Costa Mesa resident local hires? Do you have an enforcement policy or a plan in place to do such a thing?
Currently, we'll have to work with, with the city on that. We recognize that that's the first tier. That's, that's the first priority is, is Costa Mesa residents. And it certainly is part of the, the agreement itself, that is, when a request is sent, that is who's supposed to be dispatched to the, to the site first. One of the things we do want to make sure we are doing is, is that we are, again, contractors are submitting those request forms and are requesting tier-one residents. The other piece of this, though, and something I want, want to at least explore through, with their, the agreement also has the joint administrative committee, is through that and working with, with the trades, is local outreach. I know that resident graduates from the local high schools count as local, as local workers. And I know a question was raised before the meeting about outreach to local schools. I, I think that's a great idea. We've, we've done that in the past with other agencies, working with, having local outreach events. And I think, I think it's a great idea to have, to do local outreach with, either through the schools or local community colleges. And I know there's, there's, I know there's talk about possibly having an MC3 program here in Costa Mesa. I think currently the closest one is Santa Ana.
That's correct.
But yeah, that's, that's the, that would be my main focus, was to try to, try to look at outreach and have, whether it's job fairs or what form that takes.
Okay. So here's, here's what I want to see from you, and it's not going to be tonight, of course, but this is what I want. I want you guys to have a, a process where you have an enforcement leg on this, okay? Because it's very important. And I want to see a policy and procedure for mandating an enhanced policy that provides local hire and ratios for these community workforce agreements and project labor agreements. Okay? That's, that's, it's really important. I think that you guys should have a plan for that for all cities. I think you should also have a means and method for enforcement and, and what organization that you utilize, whether it's the DIR, the Department of Industrial Relations, whether it's the DOL, the Department of Labor, whatever institution it is, I think that you should have something in place to enforce that. Because I really think that's going to be your sole purpose when this starts coming down, because you're going to find that the ratios aren't there, the local hire isn't there, the utilization of, have you heard, have you heard the term zip coded? When a project is zip coded? There's certain zip codes that they want to see on these projects. That's where the enforcement should come in, from, directly from the Solis or Solus Group. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, you have some more? Yeah? Go ahead.
No, Don, I'm sorry. Councilmember Harper has additional comments.
Can you answer this question? And he really made a statement, but it's a question in my mind still. I don't know how you enforce what you just said without the support of the contract we have. And we, our contract says, doesn't have any enforcement policy at all. So I, can you comment on how you enforce it? And I'm not picking on you. I'm trying to give you a chance to answer his comment.
Correct. Yeah, again, the, the enforcement, I think Councilman Gamaras mentioned the enforcement through the DIR. One of the enforcement mechanisms will be through the DIR, through apprentice utilization. If the, if the apprentice ratios aren't, aren't being met, then the contractors need to meet them. And that, and that's one of the best ways to bring in local workers, is to request a local apprentice. True, if they're doing that, this agreement does not have a further enforcement mechanism in place currently. That's something we would need to discuss, is if contractors just are not meeting these goals and they are, they are utilizing apprentices in the proper ratio, we would need to talk about, well, do we add something to the contracts, liquidated damages? Or either in terms of not meeting the goals or not providing a good faith efforts documentation? That would be the next step.
So if they don't meet the goals, you go through a process, you file some paperwork, you talk a lot, and then, and then ultimately, they might pay some penalties based on state law? Not based on our contract, or not based on the contract they may have signed. It's, it's according to state law, right?
Correct.
And they pay those, they pay those penalties. Does the project ever get stopped in those situations?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
I have a question for staff, for Mr. Seth Raman. You know, you talk about enforcement, that's kind of my game, right? I know how to enforce a contract. I spend a good amount of every day on that issue. And normally, it has to do with filing a lawsuit, trying to get a judgment, something of that nature. It's very inefficient. Enforcing contracts is kind of, in a way, fool's gold. It costs a lot of money. Let me ask you about another way to do it. What if we had a contractor that was just blowing off all these things and not, and not doing the local hires that are required under the PLA? Would that be grounds for not giving them a subsequent contract?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yes, those are things that we definitely take into account. One thing we, we always, even now, we have contracts that have liquidity damages that we built in, built in a lot of contracts. They have a specific number of days they have to finish the job, and if they don't, there is a penalty that, that gets enforced on them. So that's to keep the job on track. We can do something similar on CWA implementation and, and have penalties built in there too.
So, yeah, good. So in other words, the CWA can provide a framework for developing language in our contracts on an individual project?
Exactly.
And the, and the, and those individual contracts can provide the enforcement mechanism in addition to the powerful incentive to comply with the CWA? Because if you didn't do that, then that would be something that the staff and the city council would consider in deciding to award future projects.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to add to that. Not only could we find a non-compliant contractor who would want to bid on a future project, perhaps non-responsible because they hadn't complied, but yeah, we will definitely be adding language to the public works contracts that will be performed under this, that will be specific to penalties for failure to comply with the requirements.
All right. Wonderful. So this is a very stimulating discussion. Let's open it up to the public.
Mr. Mayor, I know, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Questions forget, questions forget.
Yes, of course.
Okay. So I had, I had a lot of, I think we're all on the same page in terms of wanting this program to succeed and to see that in workforce development in Costa Mesa and in Orange County. So I had sent some questions ahead of time, and I think, I assume the answers came from your team. Thank you for providing that. So I had asked, like, among the dozens of contracts that you have, similar contracts that you've had in the area, what has been the efficacy in terms of local hire? You provided numbers with a low of 35%, which is our, our goal, right? Up to 70% local. I understand all the contracts are a little bit different. So based on your experience and the way our contract is constructed, and I know it's difficult to predict this, you know, it's coming, I'm not going to hold you to it, but what do you expect in terms of how you see these programs lay out, or how, how you've seen these programs sort of perform and the way our contract is constructed? Do you anticipate needing additional enforcement?
We may. I, I think you have a variety of projects. You have some that are very large, that I think will be much easier to meet the goals on. Some of the smaller roadwork projects, those can sometimes be, you have smaller crews, you have a shorter time, timeframe. It can be, it can be harder for contractors. And so there, there may be some need for extra enforcement there. One thing I do like about your agreement is you do have this additional transitional worker goal, which I think will actually promote contractors. They're, they're recognized, hey, it's not just a local hire goal, it's also this transitional worker goal. And a worker can qualify to meet both. A lot of the other agreements we do in the area, it's just local hire. So I think actually having that second goal will actually help us meet, meet both goals more actually than just having the single goal. If, if that makes sense, I...
Sure. Yeah. I think the way I anticipate seeing this play out and why some of my other questions were about, you know, the reporting frequency and, and information that we'll get. And I know, you know, how frequently it makes sense to report depends on how much work we're doing. I think we want to, this is a five-year contract, because we know that it takes time to, to sort of develop all of these relationships further, you know, invite people into apprenticeship programs, have them grow and be, be available to work. I'm hoping and expecting, and tell me if this expectation is correct, that, you know, well, in our first report, we'll sort of see how we did, and, and based on your experience, you'll give recommendations on, like, this is progressing as, as it should to meet your goals, or maybe there's some changes we might need to, to make. Is that, is that fair?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. What I don't want to do is, you know, find out in year four that we're falling way short and we should have made some changes and, you know, we didn't raise the flag soon enough.
Right. And we'll provide reporting monthly to the city, so that you're able to see, in pretty much in real time, how, how the projects are going and how the goals are doing.
Yeah. Okay. Good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public? Open it up to the public? Yes, sir.
Dave Everett with the Western Electrical Contractors Association. And one thing I would point out about the goals for these PLAs or CWAs is that sometimes they meet them, sometimes they don't, but it's always an afterthought. Because think of it like this, if you're a 15-year carpenter in the union and they go, hey, there's a first-year carpenter who's going to take this job because he's a Costa Mesa resident, that isn't going to fly with you when you're a 15-year carpenter in the union. The point of the union is seniority. And so all these goals have no teeth to them, none of them are enforceable. And what he's doing, he's confusing apprenticeship with the state because of prevailing wage and those penalties, and the lack of penalties for your PLA contract. There are no penalties for your PLA contract if you don't get minority, local hire, veterans. So just to be clear about that. And then the second thing that was mentioned is that non-union apprentices can work on these. That's not true. Non-union apprentices cannot work on PLA projects. They're completely banned from it. Non-union contractors can bid on it and pay into the union's healthcare plan and pay into the union's, um, union fees, but the apprentices themselves by state law are not allowed to work on, on PLA projects. So if you're an apprentice in Costa Mesa, you would not be able to work on any of these projects. But that's actually, is not the reason I'm here tonight. I wanted to mention a little bit about the cost. When this special interest deal was proposed last year, I came to our city council and tried to explain that this would increase the cost of construction projects in Costa Mesa, subject to the CWA, PLA. Not only would the administration be expensive, as we're finding out tonight, but it would be expensive for the taxpayers because less competition and fewer bids will increase the cost of the construction projects. And it will increase the cost much more than the council and specifically Mayor Stevens indicated when they approved the wasteful discriminatory special interest deal. The mayor claimed this would only cost $28,000 a year to Costa Mesa taxpayers for the administration. When the reality could not be further from the truth, it's closer to $80,000 a year. I think you'll find that for the rest of the PLA too, is that your projections are wildly off and that it's going to be, this is three times more expensive. I think you'll find the rest of the PLA is that expensive as well. So I'll submit my comments to the record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening again. So first, I just wanted to echo some of the questions and comments from Councilmember Harper about the bidding process here. I mean, I have a different question, although his geographic question was very good, which is, who is Rod West Flooring, Floor Covering? That is the other bidder that wasn't mentioned by staff. A quick Google search revealed to me that it was, has a contractor license for flooring work, but I couldn't find anything about its consulting work. Maybe it was a real bid? I have an open mind, but that seemed really odd. Anyway, I don't, honestly, I don't love this. In full disclosure, I don't love the underlying CWA either, but the horse has left the barn on that one. And, you know, it would be great if at the time we make agreements like the CWA, that we are more transparent about whether the city staff has sufficient bandwidth to do the work under the agreement, or whether it would be more cost-effective to outsource the entire administration of a contract like this one to a, to an outside consultant. I mean, I assume there are some city staff positions, which would be extremely local hire, that we haven't created by taking this approach. And maybe that's the right thing to do. And while there were some vague references to the possibility that we might contract this work out under the, in the staff report for the CWA, I do wonder if there would have been more discussion if the 400,000-plus price tag had been contemplated at the time as part of that agreement. I also don't love that we have a lot of questions, obviously, about how this is going to be administered. It's clear we're not going to have the same level of oversight over a contractor or a consultant as we would do if we was, if this was done in-house. And I get the benefits of having professional advice, especially in the area of law and regulatory compliance. I am a lawyer, after all, so I totally understand that. regulatory compliance, I am a lawyer, after all, so I totally understand that, but public transparency should factor in here as well. Using a consultant as yet another layer between the public and the government in terms of accountability. So I'd really like the council, next time, that we look at future programs, that we scrutinize them, determine exactly how much is going to be sent out for professional consultants, and how much that's going to cost. We're effectively entering into a five-year contract with, as far as I can tell, no real competition and a ceiling that could well, put us on the hook for well over $400,000. And those $400,000 could completely overhaul one of our parks, for example, or endowed our bus shelters that we talked about, or completely several active transportation projects. So let's be thoughtful in the future about how much our contracts are really going to cost us when we're considering them, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Off the bat, I just want to say I am supportive of CWAs, and I'm supportive of the direction that this is going in broad strokes, but I do want to echo some of the comments that Ms. Tanaka shared, and even that council member Harper shared about the distance and range for this. And so I also think there's some best practices here in terms of the bidding process that, like Ms. Tanaka mentioned, that if, you know, kind of developing a policy or practice of having three legitimate bids, and if not getting that, maybe that's the standard for expanding the geographic zone of potential bidders. And so just kind of developing some sort of policy there, I think that's like a best practice in terms of, when you're thinking about, you know, building infrastructure and those sorts of things, so I would encourage something similar on this front. On a different note, though, I think this is, like I said, I want to direct this at council, not necessarily the applicant or the individual here, it's just that I really want to see kind of questions and directions associated with, you know, how is this going to be benefiting our community? And I also think, like, I personally want to know if we're going for a local hire, like this is, you know, I think a lot of us here on this council care about climate change, like, what are the climate change impacts of having local hire? What is the VMT reduction of having local hire? I think that's the, that's my kind of request of council, is to be asking those sorts of questions, so that the public can be illuminated, and so I can be illuminated to what the benefit of that is. And I think just the public deserves to know more about this, and just because, like, I am a fan of CWAs, I don't think that necessarily means this is a transparent and effective process for a general member of the public who wants to understand this more. So that's just my feedback for you all, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak to this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, excellent, then we'll close public comment. Looks like we already got a motion on the board. Council member Gamaros, what is your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to recommend that we award the service contract to the Solus Group as recommended by staff.
Second.
Anything to say about your motion, council member Gamaros?
Yes, I do have a few things I'd like to say. I just want to make sure that you understand the importance of this going through, and I want to make sure that you have an open line of communication with the various trades, that you're utilizing their potential, you're making sure that the building trades are also utilized in this process, and that we do get the personnel out on the field, doing and learning what they need to do, so that we have a succession plan moving forward for the future, because that's what you're here for. That's all, thank you.
Excellent, and council member Chavez, do you wish to be heard on the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Stevens. First of all, thank all my council for asking the questions they asked, it's always good to have discussions, and this is no different on this item. I'm supporting this item, because this is really the mechanism which we can study and track how effective the CWA is. When we brought on this a few months ago, one of the comments I was raising on the dais was, how are we going to track it? How are we going to make sure that this is actually addressing the need in the community? At the time, the need really was finding a place to make sure that it's our residents in Costa Mesa, who are doing the projects in Costa Mesa. It was a way to make sure that the students at Easton High School and Costa Mesa High School that are going through the RFP programs have a pathway to a good wage, a good living wage. Last week, in this council dais, we heard the plea of residents asking for rent control and have the council mention wages. This is a direct correlation to a better path of life. This gives us the metrics to really see if those who we're contracting with are following our rules and following our goals, which is to make sure that folks in our community are building our community and have a living wage while doing it. So for that, I'm happy to support this motion, thank you, staff, for bringing it forward. It really is the last piece of that visioning, so thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, does any, yeah, okay, council member Ren.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple comments in response to the comments. We, I think we talked a lot about the benefits of this program, and we supported the CWA initially, so, you know, here we're really focused on sort of the ins and outs of how we administer. One of the benefits we've certainly talked about today is workforce development, and I appreciate the experience that this contractor brings, given their broad experience, the number of projects, the number of cities that you've been engaged with, cities and counties you've been engaged with. So this is a new program for our city, our staff already have a lot on our plate, so I think it's a good decision to contract this work with a consultant that has a lot of experience and can bring those lessons to our city and to support our staff. As I said before, I think, you know, one of the, the job is not just to track how we're doing, right, it's to track how we're doing for the purpose of making changes as we need to, developing relationships, facilitating in the different ways to make sure we meet those goals and hopefully exceed those goals. I'll be looking at that 70% number for Anaheim School District, and pushing us to try to beat that number, so we can be the highest in Orange County. With that said, I know there's a strong plan for reporting, just want to put in the record that I hope we can get a report, a sort of a formal report to city council, and, you know, through council to the public, maybe at least two times a year, just on how the program's going, what the numbers look like, any ideas to make, or recommendations for changes if we're sort of off track based on how things are going. So thank you, I'm looking forward to see how this proceeds.
Thank you. Council member Harper.
Thank you. This is nothing against the Solus Group, I think you guys look like a good quality, quality consulting firm. Living wage has nothing to do with this, living wage, when we do city contracts for prevailing wage, so those, that's the market, and that'll drive those people. What we did with the PLA was eliminate, you know, 80% of construction workers that aren't in a union. And what we're doing with this agreement, to the benefits of people, and there's got to be some benefits, I hope, but we're essentially really just recruiting for unions and putting people in those contracts, and that's what we're doing, and that's what we're driving. And there is no, good luck with accountability and trying to enforce this, because there is no real penalties in our contract, I don't know how you do it, and I know you're going to try, and I appreciate that, I think you're a good firm, but I won't be supporting this $400,000 project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I don't, I don't really have any other comments. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 5-1 with council member Harper voting no.
All right, wonderful. Well, we're all out of items on our new business calendar, does anyone else have anything that they would like to say? No, we're good? All right, well then, we're adjourned at 8:18 PM.